I will call this meeting to order. This is the regular board meeting of the St. Peter School Board, Monday, March 15th, 2021. This is a virtual meeting via livestream courtesy of our seven-plus inches of snow that we received today. So I think we will... Should we do the pledge or should we save that for in-person meetings? Typically, we have not done the pledge for virtual meetings, so we will table that until we are live again and near the flag. Yes?
I'm not sure what's happening, but I hear two of you.
That's two more than anyone needs. Give me one second.
Bill, you know, I did that one time. Bill, I did that one time and as I opened up the meeting twice, you know, trying to make it come, and there was a real strong echo.
Well, you need to find a friend.
Is this any better?
I don't hear it on my end.
Okay. Sorry, Bill, you will have to suffer alone. Would someone be interested in making a motion to consider and adopt the agenda with one proposed change? That we move information item number two, which is the Native American Parent Advisory Committee? And Bernie is graciously here to speak to that, to the spot on the agenda directly following the Student Council report directly before the action items begin?
I move to accept the agenda with the proposed amendment.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Locensgard. Sorry, Vice Chair Locensgard.
Dixon, second.
Excellent. Thank you. We will do a roll call. Vicki?
Here. Here.
Bill? Dr. Soderland?
Aye.
Tim?
Locensgard, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
And John?
Carlson, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. If there are requests or questions to speak to the agenda, I would refer people to the COVID information email on our website as we have used that for virtual meetings in the past. Moving to the consent agenda. Is there some initial discussion or would someone like to make a motion? If there's an item that anyone needs pulled out to discuss further, we can do that too.
I just had a couple of questions, more for curiosity, I feel like, but with the two of the teaching, there was a special education teacher at South that was added. I think that was just for the school year. And then a homebound instructor for the middle school. Are those just kind of this-year things? Or that per individual cases kind of qualified for that? Or is there... Anybody have any insight for me?
Principal Elk, you want to...
Yes, I can say the one at South. When we went back full-time, we had one teacher who was helping with our doing the distance learning, our special education students in distance learning. And then we have three students who are currently in need of a level-three setting. So that teacher then moved to the level-three setting. So we brought in an experienced special education teacher who had retired, and she is now conducting the... and working hourly on the distance learning. So it really was a result of circumstances based on student needs.
Okay. That's kind of what I was thinking, but I didn't know.
Thank you, Tracy. And what was the other one? Which school?
With the homebound instruction. I'm curious.
Yeah, with the homebound instruction, traditionally, that's a position that is filled by a teacher on staff, and it's an extra hourly rate that that teacher makes. Due to the circumstances of this year, that teacher would like to reduce some of those hours, and we were able to find a very, very qualified candidate to fill in a few hours throughout the week to support in that role. So cost neutral, the cost just goes to a new person.
Okay. So both kind of COVID sort of reactions and just staffing. Okay, that's what I was curious about.
Thank you. Any other board member? Superintendent Granseth?
I just wanted to call out that a grants and donations section, that there was a very generous donation of $500 a month for the rest of the school year that will be in the form of gift cards for families in need. And that was an anonymous donation.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. I have one item that doesn't need to be pulled out, but I just wanted to acknowledge Afi Sagat and his new role as Coordinator of Educational Equity. This is a new position, and we'll hopefully be hearing from him at future board meetings and seeing the new cultural center unfold. And I'm really looking forward to the extra staff time and the robustness of that planned program, and a lot of good things to come from Afi and his team. So excited for that.
This is Tracy. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, but I also wanted to say to that with the resignation of Jordan Paula, that I think, is it three years that he's been here, but he's done an amazing job with the new school and now with the madness of COVID and a lot of state tournament teams. So just wanted to call that out, that we'll miss him, but South Dakota is lucky to get him. And I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion?
Dixon, second.
And a second. Further discussion? John?
Ben, this is John Carlson. I just want to let you know that the books are in order and the bills.
That is important. Thank you, Treasurer Carlson. And thank you, Director Stewie, for recognizing Jordan as well. He will be missed, but we're excited he gets to take on this new challenge and adventure closer to home. Hearing no other discussion, we do have a motion and a second, so we'll do a roll call. Vicki?
Hager, aye.
Dr. Soderland?
Soderland, aye.
Tim?
Locensgard, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
John?
Carlson, aye.
Leonard, aye. Consent agenda passes, is approved. Thank you. All right, student spotlight. Student of the Month at South Elementary. Principal Elk, do you want to introduce Hollis?
Absolutely. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Hollis Handgartner, and she is a first grader at South Elementary. And I have a great little story to just tell you about why she's probably sitting here. I did ask all of the teachers to nominate some students that they felt did a wonderful job of representing our star pride, which is our behavior program at South. And who's just a student that always is consistently going above and beyond to show that they care about others. And so Hollis was nominated by her first-grade teacher, Mrs. Grunzner. And I pulled Hollis out last Friday and said, you know what, Hollis? I asked teachers to give me the names of students who they thought would do a great job, and we're looking for students who always are showing star pride and just are just well, would represent South Elementary well. And Hollis's eyes lit up and she said, you know what? I have the perfect person for you. She wanted to nominate her friend. So, you know, that just really shows that Hollis is one of those people who is always looking at others instead of looking at herself. And for a first grader to do that, I think that really is a represents the kind of individual that Hollis is and why she is here with us today. So she is the daughter of Ryan and Mary Handgartner, and I am going to let her just tell us a little bit about herself. After I read a paragraph that her teacher wrote about her. She said, "I chose Hollis because she is an exemplary top-20 student in our first-grade classroom. Hollis comes to school each day with a smile and is prepared for our day. She maintains this positive attitude throughout the school day. She is a great listener, she is kind and thoughtful, and uses these characteristics to help her peers who may need a little extra assistance in understanding their assignments. She is a first-grade tech-savvy person and is always able to help her peers with iPad questions. She's a hard worker and demonstrates many top-20 qualities, which is helpful in helping all of our students in our classrooms be successful." So with that, Hollis, would you like to tell them a little bit about yourself? Why don't you start by telling them, what are some things that you and your family like to do?
We like to go camping, and we also really, really like to do stuff outdoors because hiking and doing outdoor stuff and doing all that stuff outdoors is one of our favorite things.
Okay, wonderful. And how about in the classroom? What are some of your favorite things to do in first grade?
Math and phonics.
Okay, wonderful. And today was an e-learning day. Why don't you tell them, what did you do for some of your assignments today?
We figured out how much cents it was worth. Like, there were two dimes and then there were like two nickels and that in quarters. So, and then we had to figure out how much cents that would be in all.
Okay. Was that hard for you or not? Not at all. I didn't think it would be. And you were talking to me today when we talked at noon, you were telling me about your Fiyette assignment. What was that?
That one was to build a fort out of snow.
And how did that go for you?
Pretty good, except the walls kept falling down.
So it was, it was good snowman snow, but not so great at Fort Snow. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, but I had it packed tightly together, so it didn't go so bad.
Okay.
But it still kept falling down.
Right. And the last part for you, Hollis, is why don't you tell them what's your favorite thing about South Elementary?
My favorite thing about South Elementary is probably specialists.
Okay, going to all your specialist classes.
Yeah. My favorite specialist class is gym.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you, Hollis, and thank you to the school board for allowing us this opportunity to showcase a student like Hollis.
Thank you so much, Hollis. Any questions for... Thank you. You are welcome to...
Yeah, thank you, Hollis. That was outstanding. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
You certainly can join us for the rest of the meeting, but no one would fault you for just turning off your monitor and going to do something fun. Thank you very much.
Aye.
I'm not coordinated enough to see if Liz Mitchell has joined us.
I don't think that either one of our co-presidents could make it tonight, but I look forward to Hollis perhaps stepping in in this role in just a few short years. I think she would do a great job. I can give a little bit of a Student Council, at least a high-five to them. They're really trying to treat this first week back as the first week back at school for everybody. And so they've been in decorating the commons, decorating some of the pods. And I would be in trouble with their advisor if I failed to mention that everybody is supposed to wear their homecoming T-shirts tomorrow for the first day all-in. And they are also planning on some lunchtime entertainment on Thursday. So stay tuned. They're doing a great job.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So with our slight adjustment to the agenda, we are going to hear from Bernie and about the Native American Parent Advisory Committee and a report, correct, Superintendent Granseth?
Yes, that's right. And I thought that Mr. Graff could give a little summary overview first, so we know what we're hearing.
Right, thank you. So as everybody knows, state statute requires that a school district with over 10 students who identify as Native are required to have a parent advisory team made up of parents of those Native students and members of the school. And in 2017, I believe, was the year that St. Peter met that threshold. So we threw together a small team, and Bernie, I hope I'm not out of line by saying I'm not so sure we knew what we were doing, but we dove in and go, and now we are moving and shaking. And it is my honor to serve as the liaison on that team of incredible parents. In just a bit here, I'm going to introduce our board chair, who's going to tell us a little bit about what the team's been up to and tell you a little bit about our annual vote of concurrence. So without further ado, introduce Bernadette Volk, who has been the chair of the committee since its origination in 2017.
Hi. Everybody calls me Bernie. I think I met most of you guys. It's my pleasure to be the chair of this committee. I know we met a couple of years ago. We didn't meet last year. I was on our Native American Advisory Board back in Wagner, South Dakota, where I'm from, where my kids were on there for about 13 years. And it was a lot. There was 75% of the elementary was Native American, and yet out of 600 students, we'd only have two or three of them graduate. So we were working really hard with the school board and stuff to give an incentive on how can the kids stay? Because we had boarding school that's 12 miles away, and the standards of education from the Wagner School, which had high standards, and the boarding school, which wasn't so high, the kids could play basketball down there or sports. And so we started in with a Native American feather ceremony and start quilt giveaway for the seniors who graduated. And the last year I was there, before I moved up here, we had 14 students graduate. So it's kind of like, you know, the incentive, you do that for warriors, you know, you do that in honoring ceremonies, and that's about the only thing that children have to do anymore, you know, as they go off to service and stuff like that. So I enjoy, you know, encouraging children to finish school. I'm not bashful in saying that I've always had learning disabilities, so I try to help children who have got a problem socially, in school, whatever have you. You know, I've got a couple of children that have problems, so I understand the battle that kids go through. But being on this board, we have at the present time five parents on this board here. We've had different ones come and go. And I think because it's taking a while to get things rolling, you know, it's not a hurry up, make them do this, hurry up, make them do that kind of a thing. And I said, you know, we got to, we have these agendas, and we have meetings to go to. And we were only meeting, I think John, was it like three times a year? I think. And then we went to four times a year. And then now we're going to almost do monthly to address certain agendas. I know we've talked about purchasing books. We talked about purchasing maps. Did we do those already? It didn't...
Yep, that's in the works.
Those are all in the works. They're on maps on, you know, like what Minnesota looked like at one time, and hopefully where it's gone to from this point to that point and stuff. So just stuff like that. And, you know, I understand we are the smallest nationality in the school. You know, I'm not sure on the Asian people, but I do see more of them than I see of Native kids. But I know of any other nationalities, we're one of the smallest. But we would like to educate people more on the land here in Minnesota and how it came about and how we're just, we're not mass-carrying savages that a lot of times portrayed in history books and stuff, that we do have a lot of culture. We do, we're very spiritual. The smudging ceremony that was going to happen today was one of the things that I had going that was brought up to where I come from in the school I raised, my kids went to. They would say, well, is this religious or is this spiritual? You know, we're very spiritual people. You know, the smudging thing is just to cleanse, purify, go into a meeting, start your day with a clear mind, you know, an open heart, don't carry anger with you. So that's all the smudging really is, you know, and then to... I mean, I think, I know the Asian people and I know Indian people and I know a lot of people of color. They all smudge because there's something to do with the sage, you know, purifies your body. So it's good. We do it in the morning. We do it one morning. Somebody, we do it when somebody's sick. We do it if you have bad feelings, like the kids have bad dreams, you know, stuff like that. But anyway, we could explain more of that. When it comes time and I later date to smudge. I think, what did it come across? Bill? I think this started out because we was talking about vaping, smoking policies at the school, and the kids that are vaping, and we said, you know, does people know the difference between what marijuana smells like and what sage smells like? For the ones natives that who do smudge in the morning. So then we was talking, and that's what brought this up to where maybe we should smudge at the school and they can get a good whiff of what real sage smells like. But back to the agenda. What is the Native American? I like this. We changed it. It's not NI. It used to be Native, no, it was American Indian. But it's Native American Parent Advisory Committee. And this year here was $20,000 the state granted to support of Native education. The grant award is based on a number of Native students within the district, 20 students district-wide. We have three goals for the grant money, three goals for the grant money. I didn't see that one here. Professional development for the district staff, culturally responsive teaching and native culture education. Two, Native American resources to help support Native education, books, maps, et cetera. Three, increase student voice through the creation of student groups at the high school that focuses on topics of racial equality. Then do we want to stop? You guys got any questions on them?
Questions?
Any questions on that first one or the second one on what we do? No? I'll keep on going. Number three, each year, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee must vote on if the district is meeting the needs of the Native students. This year, like the past, the years past, the team voted in concurrence. The district is meeting the needs. The potential improvement discussed by the team includes the following. Increase teachers of color inviting board member to our Native American Parent Advisory Committee meetings. Now, we noticed that, was that in the... What page, John, was that on that we was looking at it? And it had that apparent of school board member and district staff members should be at our meetings. Was that...
Yeah, in the compliance paperwork, it talks about how the purpose of the team, the Native American Parent Advisory Council, is really to advise district staff and the school board. And the team talked about a potential way to do that would be to have an invite to a board member to attend our meetings to help kind of with that communication piece. Did I get that right?
Yeah, I think that's how that was. And then we also said that having you there, as John's our secretary. He takes a minute. He's got all electronics and all the screens for the virtual ones that could come in and stuff. So we take it that, you know, he's the one of the district staff. But we want to also put out the invitation out there to any school members who, school board members who want to attend. We feed. We always have pizza. And then we also had a couple of potlucks and stuff. And then with COVID and everything, you know, I always kind of went off the work. But that was one, you know, to that, a couple of the members thought should be a must. But I thought if we could just, you know, invite, you know, if anybody's interested, you know, whenever we have them. Like I said, it used to be just three times a year, but I know next month we're having one. We're having the main office out of Minneapolis come down next month to help us set up like bylaws. Well, we had a just first time where one of our members was going to be absent from the meeting. And since we only have, I think we only had four this last time, didn't we, John? So my Beth, the one member, she was going to be out of town. So she had it notarized and everything on what she was going to vote on for concurrence, and it was one of the first times. So we had to make sure we approved of it, make sure we go through the right, you know, the proper... Because there's, I don't know, how much can you say, John? That there's some that wanted to vote for non-concurrent, right?
Yeah. So, you know, like I had talked about, you know, where the team is growing in its scope and what it's working on. And as we become, you know, more solid of a team and making more of an impact due to that grant money, it's really come apparent that we need to, you know, tighten up the bylaws and make sure that we're doing things by the book so that there's a process and a procedure. So...
Because it's last time we had a vote of two and two. And if it wasn't for Beth's vote coming in, it wouldn't have been so...
So I think that we won't be able to have an answer to that tonight, but this is a time for us to hear that and to respond. You know, I think that one way or another, we will have a stronger connection with the school board, whether a board member attends your meetings or if we build in opportunities through the year, maybe quarterly, but for you to report to the school board so that the whole board has that opportunity to hear what's going on too. So we'll continue to work together to find the best solution for that.
I think that'd be great. I like meeting with you guys.
Yeah, thanks for joining us tonight.
I know. And yeah, and that was the last one. Was you on on that there? Oh, the one that they had on there too was, why did we have any more people of color on staff? And so I asked if the people put the job advertisements out there, if they were utilizing the websites that was given to them. And they said, yeah, that they... And I said, well, you can't make people come. You know, if they don't put in, you can't make them come. And I've been on my tribe where I was at, I was a director, so you're on the hiring and firing. I was on the board there, and you have to compare apples to apples. If they meet the requirements that you're requiring, they have to meet those. You can't just say, well, because you're of color, we're going to hire you, you know, back and forth. So there goes, there's a lot of things that go into this besides just saying, well, you got to hire, you know, people of color. And then if they don't meet the requirements, then you can't hire them. You know what I'm saying? But anyway, that's what we talked about, and I will be happy to come and meet with you guys whenever you want me to. The end.
Thank you, Bernie.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I think, you know, the district is incredibly invested in this committee. We're incredibly invested in ensuring that our staff represents our community and our state. And I think, as I mentioned earlier, with the newly created educational equity coordinator position and office, I think that that's going to help us continue down this path. It's not something that we're going to be able to flip a switch, but everyone in the district is committed to diversity and inclusion and meeting the needs of all of our students and all of our staff and making sure that we do represent our communities.
I have one more thing to say on that one there. Because it was brought up at the meetings, was asking if there was any Native American staff member. And they did say there is two. And they said, well, why aren't they here? And I thought, well, you can't make people come to this meeting. You know, if they're invited and they don't show up, that's, you can't make them. So that's the way that part goes. Because we do know there are some here that are employed with the district and stuff, so...
Yeah, thank you for that. Superintendent Granseth and then Director Stewie.
Thank you. And Bernie, just so you can let the committee know and so the board members know what happens from here, is we take their vote of concurrence and their recommendations, and then we will write up a response and tell them how we plan to work in those areas. And certainly, we'll be working closely together moving forward. But that would be the next step. Um, but that, that would be the next step going from here.
That'll be good. Depending on the further date for the smudging thing would be a good time if it was like in May or so, really quick here. So we can, we can feed you guys. We'll feed you guys traditional food if it was farther to where this pandemic stuff is lifted up more. Okay.
Well, that wouldn't be necessary, but we, we appreciate, uh, food and.
Oh, it's never necessary. We just love doing it. We love serving our traditional food.
And Bernie, I do have a gift for you for speaking tonight, but it's hard to give it to you virtually. So I have, I have some wild rice for you that, um, my family harvested. Uh, so next time we see each other, um, I will. I will have that for you.
Thank you so much. Really quick, I'll say that when I first came here and I got hired on Mystic Lake. People were handing me over bags of rice, so it must be me like a welcome kind of a thing. And I had never had it before. And once I started cooking, it was like, oh my God, and I ran out right away. But thank you so much. I haven't had it for so long.
Very good.
I thought you'd give me a virtual hug.
Hey Ben, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely. Thank you, Bernie. Uh, Director Stewie.
Um, so Mr. Graff did, I'm not trying to give you work, but did you say, did you take minutes at these meetings?
I do. I take darn good minutes at these meetings.
Well, you know, I mean, I don't always have the time to attend another meeting. Not that I wouldn't want to, I could maybe commit to like, you know, some here and there, but I can read really fast and that might be a nice way to. Just be a little connected. So if there's a way to do that, that might be a way for us to know what's going on. I know we all get a lot of emails, but. It's just another way to be connected. Cause I have to admit, this isn't my wheelhouse, right? But I want to know more about it, so.
Thank you. Excellent. Well, Bernie, like we said, you can, uh, you can stick around, but we appreciate you, uh, coming and talking to us and, uh, we did want to give you that opportunity before. Uh, our action items, so you wouldn't have to stay if you didn't want to, so. Thank you.
Okay, I, I made a couple of big pans of cinnamon rolls. And she is just too quiet in there, so I'm sure she's having her way with my cinnamon rolls. So I want to thank you guys all for listening to me. You have a great day.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, bye bye.
Well, we will leave our, uh, next information item for the information item section, but we will start, uh, our action items. Uh, with the CSP agreement.
Thank you. Um, this is an agreement that has been in place for a few years now and typically it gets renewed each year. Uh, with some adjustments. This year there aren't any adjustments to the, the cost. Um. However, there is an adjustment that would make it. Um. Continuous, a continuous agreement, uh, but we added a clause for an out. Um, so either the city or the school district could, um, make a decision to. To discontinue the, the arrangement, um, and it's. Based on, now I can't remember the date. It's in, in July of each year. Um. If we wanted to cancel that agreement. Um, Mr. Bachman, I don't know if you wanted to add more about that. Uh, you probably have a little bit more history than I do.
Sure. Um. We, we started this agreement with the opening of the high school. And initially, I think the thinking was one year, let's see how it goes. It went. Okay, let's do it another year. So that's why initially it was a one-year agreement. But, uh, it's been working very well the last couple of years, so. Uh, and as. Mr. Grand Seth mentioned, we have an out if we ever have any issues or want to change how we're doing things or. Whatever may, may come, but, uh, it's been very good the last few years. So we appreciate all the work they're doing for us to, to make our. Grass stand tall and then cut it down.
And that date was July 30th was the deadline for notification if, if we didn't want to continue.
Questions? And we did, uh, meet about this in facilities, uh, committee as well. If there's no more initial discussion, if someone would, uh, like to. Make a motion.
Dixon, I move to approve the maintenance agreement for Community Spirit Park between, uh. District 508 School and, um, the City of St. Peter.
Hager, second.
Excellent. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll do a, a roll call. Uh, Vicky?
Hager, I.
Dr. Soderland?
Soderland, I.
Tim?
Logan Skard, I.
Excellent. Thank you. Drew?
Dixon, I.
Tracy?
Stewie, I.
John?
Carlson, I.
Leonard, I. Uh, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to action item number two, uh, athletic trainer contract. This was discussed at our last meeting. Uh, and we decided to table it, uh, because we wanted to have a chance to review the actual. Uh, contract, which is included in, uh, board packets, uh, starting on page, uh, 40. Uh, so, uh, Superintendent Grand Seth, do you want to introduce this again?
Uh, I think you did a, a fine job of introducing it. Um, we, we had the presentation last time, but we didn't have the actual contract in our hand. Now we have this contract. Uh, we've gone back and forth a couple of times on a few pieces, checking in with our. With our legal team, making sure that all, all, that everything's in alignment. Um, and so we now have this contract. There's. Uh, one other piece with insurance that, um. We are having discussion about, but it has no effect on the, on the contract. Uh, Mr. Regner, I don't know, or Mr. Paula, if there were things that you wanted to add other than we are, we are really excited to partner with the Mayo. We think it's going to be a. Good opportunity for the school district.
I would, uh, I would agree. Again, it's a, it, it, it serves our students well. Uh, it fills a need that we have and an ever increasing need. And, uh, I think we'll actually find we'll get additional coverage. At a lower rate, uh, and we still have connections, um, and one of the, I think. One of the important things for me was the connection to the potentially the classroom. And, uh, the education side of things, working with our teachers and students and coaches and advisors. Um, so I'm excited about that relationship going forward. Uh, and I think they're going to be a great partner. There's a, a few schools in the area that have a similar, uh, partnership. And, um, again, I've heard nothing but positive things. So from that aspect, our kids will be well taken care of. Um, and, and we won't see a drop in coverage if anything, and, uh, additional coverage for our students.
Um, I would say a couple of things is actually, uh, from the financial side, it's actually a little bit less than what we have been paying. Um, so, you know, with the more coverage, so I think in, in Mayo, it's a, you know, a great organization. Um, the only other, there's a other minor change that we asked for in the contract. Again, if you see it, it's a five-year contract. There is a out. Um, similar to what you had talked about with the CSP. Um, this one's a days out and they had 30 days in there, um, where either side could terminate it. We did ask them to go for 90 days and they're agreeable to change that simply because. We didn't want to get stuck in the middle of, you know, winter season, basketball, volleyball, or basketball, wrestling. Hockey, whatever, and not have, you know, scrambling to find coverage. So it just gives us a little more time. So real minor change that and insurance, um. But otherwise it's, it's, you know, it's exciting, um, you know, from a financial standpoint, it, it, it provides us some more things than we've had in the past too.
This is Tracy. This is Tracy. I have a question. And maybe this doesn't have anything to do with the athletic trainer, but you know, when we've always done that concussion testing, like that impact testing, did the athletic trainer do that? And if they did, I, I just looked at the contract. I didn't see that spelled out in there, or is that just something that'll happen? Does that happen outside of the athletic trainers or how does that work?
I, I can speak to that. It was discussed in their presentation, uh, that wasn't included in the contract.
Okay.
They will, they will head that up. Our athletic trainer, athletic trainers have, have taken the lead on that, uh, and they will continue to do so.
Okay, I thought they did. I know you're on top of it, Jordan, but sometimes I just like to ask you questions to keep you on your toes.
Right, that's fair.
Chair Leonard, I move that we, uh, accept the contract, uh, for athletic training services with Mayo. Um. With Mayo in the, uh, school district.
Stewie will second.
Logan Skard, second.
I beat you, Tim.
Oh, Tracy has town internet, Tim. She got in there. We have a motion in a second.
Yep.
With roll call though, Tim. You can go first this time.
Logan Skard, I.
Thank you. Uh, Vicky?
Hager, I.
Dr. Soderland?
Soderland, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
Tracy?
Stewie, I.
John?
Carlson, I.
Leonard, I. Excellent. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we will move on to page 45 of our agenda, uh, for action item number three, which is. Second reading of policies, uh, uh, so, uh. Committee Chair Hager, if you want to speak to this. Uh. Members, uh, Stewie and Soderland or, uh, Superintendent Grand Seth, go forth.
Um, you know, I, I didn't make that last meeting. I was in Florida, so I'll let somebody else speak for me.
This is, this is the second reading? Is this the second reading? So did we get any, normally we'd ask like if we got any comments from people, so I guess. We didn't talk about anything that I remember, but. It is, it's all kind of blurred together a little bit. Did we have any comments?
I think the one change that we made was on policy 501, which is the school weapons policy. Uh, we had some discussion about, uh, whether we would allow a. A gun show to be held at school and we decided that we, we wouldn't do that. And so that was not included. In the policy. I think that is the only change that happened in these, um, since the first reading. And I did want to point out policy 419 was the tobacco-free environment. And one of the reasons we had Bernie, um, here this evening is because of the work on this policy. Which includes, uh, the ability for our Native American students to. Carry traditional ceremonial tobacco in a tobacco pouch with permission. By the principal in the school and allows Native American adults. Well, to use traditional tobaccos in, in a ceremony somewhat like smudging. And so that's where the conversation about smudging happened and we're hoping to bring that to you in the next couple of months. Um, because who knew that we were gonna have however many inches of snow. Has fallen today.
Thank you. Any, any more initial discussion or would somebody like to make a motion to? Uh, accept the. Policy revisions?
Stewie will make a motion to accept the policies. I don't need to read all the numbers, do I? All the policies that are listed in the agenda?
Superintendent Grant says, no, you do not.
Okay, well then I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the policies as listed in the agenda.
Thanks. Excellent. Motion in a second. Uh, we'll do a roll call. Uh, Vicky?
Hager, I.
Dr. Soderland?
Soderland, I.
Tim?
Logan Skard, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
Tracy?
Stewie, I.
John?
Carlson, I.
Leonard, I. Motion carries. Thank you very much, uh, policy committee, and I, I know your work, uh, continues and will. Read, uh, your next, uh, meeting when we get to the upcoming meetings of the school board. So you continue to, to work on those policies and we appreciate that. Uh, next on our agenda, page 89. Um. Those policies were rather lengthy, so we jumped from page 45 to 89. And, uh, our next item is. The 2021, 2022 school calendar. And we did approve, uh, a calendar. Uh, last meeting and there are a few necessary changes and that's why we always say. Uh, subject to change, uh, with the calendar. Uh, so I will let Superintendent Grand Seth, uh, go over those.
So even though we had. Uh, a lot of eyes on this calendar with lots of input, uh, on the calendar. Working with the admin team and the principals and the building leadership teams and teacher union leadership. Uh, we were still one duty day short of our contract. And so the change that's reflected on this calendar is that August 27th. Becomes another teacher workday. Uh, the reason that works is because, um, typically it, the week before would, um. Land on a, a Labor Day weekend. And next year it doesn't land on the Labor Day weekend. It's the weekend before. So that will become a workday. We are still continuing to work with the. Uh, high school staff, you know, on adding some more. Uh, duty time for our teachers, but that shouldn't have an effect on the calendar. So hopefully. Hopefully this is it. Um. And, uh, sorry to be bringing it back to you for a second month in a row.
No, that's okay. And I just appreciate all that goes into this. Uh, I think some people might think that. You know, well, it doesn't change very much from year to year and we just have the same calendar and everyone. Agrees and, you know, you're trying to balance the interests of, uh, multiple schools. Uh. You know, all the grade levels, uh, and, you know, all of the, the teachers and staff. Um, and trying to find consensus around, uh, what works best and, uh, that's a. That's not an easy, quick, uh, process and sometimes. Uh, you know, we have to go back and, and tweak it to come up with the, the best calendar. So appreciate circling back on this and improving it.
Um, are we going to keep with our same school start times that we are this year with the 8:30 start times? Oh, we know that was a change this year. I've, I've been asked and I guess I didn't know if that was, was that a forever thing going forward? I think people like it, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, our plan was to, um, continue with the, uh, tiered transportation.
Okay.
And, uh, but we will be the, the day will be a little bit longer next year. Um, assuming. I should knock on wood or something here. Assuming we are not adjusting the calendar for COVID and the extra planning that goes around that. Um, however. If we continue to, uh, have to make those adjustments for COVID, then we'll have to revisit the schedule. But our plan is to, um, go back to the regular length of day on the tiered. Tiered transportation.
Okay.
Chair Leonard. I move to approve the revised school calendar for 2021, 22.
Thank you, Treasurer Carlson.
Dixon, second.
Aw, poor Tim.
Thank you for the second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Uh.
I just want you to know the pain that the rural, rural kids are feeling when it comes to distance learning.
You are illustrating that, that very well. Uh, we do have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call. Uh, Vicky?
Hager, I.
Bill?
Soderland, I.
Tim?
Logan Skard, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
Tracy?
Stewie, I.
John?
Carlson, I.
Leonard, I. Motion carries. Uh, we move. Two pages to 89, uh, for our last, uh, action item of the evening, and this is Community Spirit Park. Bits. So we have had board and committee discussion about, uh, restrooms and. Uh, the school district having, uh, restroom storage, uh, concession building. Uh, on our, uh, side of the park and then the city also, uh, contributing. Uh, some infrastructure on their side of the park, uh, to really serve, uh, the public as a whole. Uh, we did meet with the facilities, uh, committee and so I turn it over. as a whole. Uh, we did meet with the facilities, uh, committee, and so I turn it over, uh, first to, uh, staff. So Mark or, uh, Superintendent Gronseth, if you want to speak to this?
If, if Mr. Bachman wants to speak to it, I will certainly let him. Or, uh, Mr. Rignor was also in those conversations.
Certainly, and I wanted to wait my turn. Um, yeah, um, bids were received. As you recall, we, we had, uh, thought about going up for bids of almost a year ago. And with COVID hitting and everything taking place and wanting to adjust sizes of buildings, the thought was to hold off and put it out for bid at a, um, time when we thought we'd get better pricing. Uh, putting things out for bid in March or early April is awful late. So I went out for bid in January and, uh, we received the bids back. Um, unfortunately, prices have gone up. So, uh, the, the hope was that we would be under two hundred and fifty thousand, um, but they, the base bid came in at the two hundred and eighty-eight. Um, and you have all the information in front of you on the different, um, we did get quite a few, which we were happy about, so there was competition for it. And other than one of the, um, proposals that came in, they were all fairly consistent and within ten percent of each other. So, um, I can answer any questions you have, or Jordan might have something he wants to share about it. So I'll pass, pass the mic.
Thank you for the Beastie Boys reference. Um, anyone? Questions? Comments? Other Beastie Boys references?
Just one comment on the financial side, because I don't know what the Beastie Boys comment was. Um,
Pass, pass the mic.
Pass the mic, okay. Um, we did have two hundred thousand dollars that we signed, um, to this project from last year that's sitting, that's sitting kind of in, I don't want to say savings, but sitting in a pool of money for this. Um, that's when we originally thought that would be close to the original cost. So, um, that's where we're at on the financial side on this one.
Thank you.
Just for anybody listening out in the public that might, I mean, can we kind of talk about like how many, I guess, you know, I don't have all of my own personal like activities that I go to out there, but in talking to people that do, they're like, yeah, we definitely need bathrooms. Like, it's a very popular, used place. But why don't we talk about all the different activities and sports, or even if it's, how often would those bathrooms get used? I mean, we're not just putting up bathrooms for the sake of doing it. There's an actual need for them. Um, Mark, can you kind of, or Jordan or somebody, like what events actually happen out there?
Mark, I can certainly speak to that. Um, so primarily, uh, up to this point, um, primarily sub-varsity. So, um, really, over the last two or three years, uh, seventh and eighth grade football, uh, C squad, B squad soccer, and then there are both the boys and girls. We've also hosted section and, and regular season soccer events out there as well. Um, just with, you know, whether it was field conditions or, or just we had more than one field to use, or we had boys and girls going on at the same time. It really provided a lot of options. Um, but there were some circumstances a couple of years ago where we had a section soccer event, so we were required to take tickets. And, uh, we, it just found itself to be a very challenging thing to do. Uh, we tried to do concessions, and again, it just wasn't a very conducive thing to do, uh, given the circumstances being a wide open park. Um, so this would provide kind of an access point to that, a point of entry, uh, for that. And then again, uh, the, the like building or similar type building on the northwest corner, uh, from the city's end, that would not have concessions on there, or a ticket-taking window on their side, but it would have restrooms. But, uh, so not only that, but then you also, what we haven't been able to utilize, uh, really to its fullest extent yet is the baseball fields. So the baseball fields on the east side, um, again, those are going to be, uh, largely used fields by the city. And, uh, this would allow them to host tournaments, um, and different events where they could have concessions and, and/or take tickets for that. Uh, so really, it kind of, uh, it checks a lot of boxes. And again, just with practices, uh, that, that it, it sounds like a, a trivial detail, but when you're practicing on one end of the park and you have to run into the building, uh, to the, uh, the south, excuse me, the, the northwest side of the building, it's a pretty long hike to, just to use the restroom. So it opens up some opportunities there and, uh, just makes it a little more functional from that standpoint, where we don't have kids running in and out of the building, um, even from a spectator standpoint. Right now there's porta-johns. Uh, we had issues a couple of years ago with, uh, a, a nice little windstorm, sent porta-johns into the, into the parking lot and hit a few of our staff member vehicles. We're trying to avoid that. Hopefully that doesn't happen with this vehicle, or with this, uh, venue, but, um, so, uh, it, it just checks a lot of boxes. It's been something in the plans, uh, all along. And, uh, again, we're just moving forward with that.
Yeah, that was helpful for me because like I said, not having, it's gone to activities out there. I didn't realize how much those fields are used. So that was helpful for me to hear. And us doing the adding in the ticket, ticket-taking slash concession stand, I'm guessing, I don't know a lot about construction, but I guess the majority of the cost is probably the plumbing and all that anyway. So adding on that extra square footage, I'm guessing isn't a huge amount? Or, I mean, and are we doing the optional aluminum doors and electrical like they have on the bid?
It would be my recommendation that we do so, so the building blends in with the rest of the high school.
Okay.
Certainly wouldn't need to, but one of the concerns all along was that that building didn't jump out at you when you drove up. Your focus still was on the high school building, and I think that would help make sure that that, that happens.
Okay. Thank you.
And to, to the point about the, the electrical, uh, and again, correct, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was really kind of setting the stage for any long-term, uh, uses. We don't really want to dig up things again. So again, whether the long-term plans would include lighted fields, for example, uh, this would help set the stage for something like that, where you don't have to, again, rework it, um, multiple times. Mark, again, I don't, I didn't mean to misspeak, uh, misspeak, that was the case, but.
No, that, that's absolutely accurate. Um, you know, the, the nice, what's been the benefit of adding this field and using it so often is prior to CSP opening and us having that JV field available, uh, one year we had fifty-five events on the varsity game field. Um, and then we're talking about injuries and concussion awareness. That's a lot of pounding on one field. So now by you being able to use those additional fields, it's, we, we've cut by at least half how many events take place on the, on the varsity field. So if we could ever eventually add the lights, it, it's not something that's in the plan now. But we just wanted to see what it would cost to put that infrastructure in to save us some digging maybe down the road, since we have to, have to do some groundwork anyway. So that's why we asked for what that cost would be.
Okay. Thanks for all that information, guys. It's helpful.
Chair Leonard, I have a couple of questions. Uh, are we accepting one of the bids tonight or, because I didn't see one of the, the companies, uh, listed in the, uh, initial, the first page that we get. It just says where, it says something about the five bids. Maybe I read it wrong, but.
The, you would be accepting the low bid, which would be the, the first, the first one listed.
So it's that we don't need to say the company is what you're saying. So, okay. And then secondly, where's the city at on this so far? Have they voted yet?
They vote next Monday.
And not that we talked to them that much, but do you have a good feeling that they will vote to accept?
Yes, we, we met with them, um, and had an initial discussion when the bids first came in, and they are, they're within their range that they wanted to invest as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Carlson. Any further discussion? Initial discussion, I should say? Does anyone wish to make a motion? Should we hold off a minute in case it's Tim? Tim, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept a little bid. For the, uh, including the alternates.
Thank you.
And Hager, I'll second it.
Excellent. We have, uh, a motion in a second. Uh, Treasurer Carlson, did you have a comment? Discussion?
I don't. I'm good. Sorry.
Awesome. No, it's okay. Uh, is there any further discussion? All right, we did have a pretty robust, uh, discussion, uh, beforehand, and we have talked about this, uh, in facilities as well as past, uh, meetings. And I think that, uh, A.D. Paula did mention that this has been in the plans, uh, for a while, and that this is one of the improvements that I think we initially talked about when we created this partnership and, and the park was created. So I'm excited that this is moving forward and we'll have those amenities as well as, uh, that storage potential and, and the chance to do concessions, uh, out there as well. I can't wait to eat my first nine AM hot dog, uh, out in Community Spirit Park. Um, with that, uh, we will do the roll call vote. Vicky?
Hager, I.
Bill?
Soderland, I.
Tim?
Logan Skerritt, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
Tracy?
Stewie, I.
John?
Carlson, I.
Leonard, I. Uh, motion carries. That is our last, uh, action item. Uh, we'll move, uh, to our, uh, lone remaining information item, and that is the first reading of policies. Uh, so does a member of the Policy Committee, uh, or Superintendent Gronseth want to introduce us to these, starting on, um, page ninety-four, I believe? Bill, I think you're up.
Yes, and my thanks to the Policy Committee, who, we spend a lot of time going over, uh, many, many pages, and policy five fifteen is a very very long, involved, um, policy that we spent quite a bit of time on. Uh, there, there are a few changes that we had made, and those are, those are listed there. And so that the policy that you see in this already has these changes made to it. But we wanted you to, um, see how we had adjusted from the original model policy. And, um, five fifteen is really all about protection and privacy of student records, has to do with what, what is private, what is public information? And so a piece of this is deciding what is considered directory information of, of students. And so that is set by this policy, and what we have decided is that there wouldn't be any changes to what we would consider as directory information. Uh, if we were to make a change to directory information, we would need to notify everyone, all the parents, everyone in the district of that change. Um, and so each year it is published what is considered directory information. Directory information is someone, what someone could come and say, please give me, um, all of the names of your students. And if that's listed in directory information, then we share that. If they say, uh, I would like to know all of your students' parents' names, their addresses, and their phone numbers, that information is not included in our directory information, that would be private data. And so it is a way of, um, clearly stating what is private information and what is public information. So that is explained in here and, uh, explains what we, what we do with information and what we do not do with information. So it is a, a very, um, thorough policy. And that replaces policy seven point eight one.
Uh, Mr. Gronseth, uh, as I was looking through the document, um, there's things in red in parentheses and things that are in, uh, bold, uh, in parentheses. Are, are those notes to the board? I mean, will those be removed or?
Those will be removed, yeah.
Okay, and the, the notes in red are, are, uh, changes in the notes in bold are just information? Is that fair?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
And then policy five twenty is on student surveys. Um, and that, uh, is pretty much as it was written by MSBA, replaces our current policy seven point eight-two, which, um, was almost verbatim the, the same word. So really we're just changing, changing, changing the, um, policy number on that one. I think calling a snow day and getting up at, uh, four in the morning is starting to wear on me a bit.
I, I appreciate it, because I think I said like robusticism or something earlier, so changing fits right in there. Any, uh, questions? Additional questions or comments? Take your time, read through these, and, uh, please do, uh, give any comments or, uh, thoughts or suggestions, uh, to the Policy Committee who, like I mentioned, uh, has an upcoming, uh, meeting, so. Great. Well, thank you. Thank you, uh, Policy Committee, uh, again, for all of your work. Um, we will move now, uh, to reports and building principles. So I don't know who got short-strawed. Uh, all right, Ative?
Yeah, we're just, we're going to go around the, the loop tonight. So, um, things are going quite well in early childhood spring, at least before today was in the air. And so our little ones were able to get out on the playground and get, uh, burn off some energy, and then the voices and the excitement on the playground was, oh, gosh, it was music to our ears. So that was, that's been certainly great. And so we hope to get back at that as soon as this all melts and dries up. Our early childhood conferences will be March twenty-fifth and March thirtieth, as well as during the day on April first, right before our spring break. And so parents will be notified of those, those meetings and can sign up for a time. So we're excited to be able to meet with our families. And then we are, um, already accepting registrations for fall of twenty-twenty-one preschool programming, and so, uh, we'll be highlighting some of those opportunities for families through various media, uh, multimedia options. So families can always call our office if they'd like an application to register. But that will be programming for children ages three, prior to kindergarten entrance in the fall of twenty-one. So that's exciting. And then in another area, um, we're talking summer programming, not just for early childhood, but across the district. And so as I supervise the targeted services program, we are, um, our principals and I have been meeting to talk with our staff, to talk about dates and, and what that's going to look like. And with the impact of, um, distance learning and COVID and all of those types of things, how we can offer, um, a ramped-up program for the summer. So we were in, that's in the works. Some more information to come. And then we did just receive word that the food service program has been extended through the summer. So we will be able to continue to offer free meals to students, and we'll be getting that information out to families and what that might look like, timelines, distribution points, et cetera, as we near, um, the end of the school year. So that's it for me, but I'm happy to take any questions. And if not, Miss Oki. Doreen, you need to unmute, Doreen.
Five bucks, five bucks. I owe each of you five dollars. Maybe that will teach me. Um, like early childhood, we too were excited and thought spring was in the air and, um, the sign, it's an official sign of, uh, spring when you see stay out of the mud signs on the door going out to the playground. So we did put the sleds away, but it looks like we'll be bringing those out again tomorrow. But, um, we have been completing our access testing. I want to thank Iliana DeRimer. That is a test that really takes a look at, um, the progress of our English learner students. And so it's very time-consuming. It's taken probably about a month to get through all of the children at, at, um, South, and some of them are administered. all of the children at at um South, and some of them are administered one-on-one. Uh, the first grade ones are done on the computer, so she did complete that last week. So that is a huge accomplishment, and we're we're excited to see the growth that some of our um readers have, or some of our learners um have experienced this year. It really measures their reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Oftentimes um with our Yale students, we may assume that um because they have the verbal skills, um, we forget to really look at where their skill level is at in those other areas. So it's very comprehensive assessment, and it gives us a lot of information in regards to their programming um going forward. So we appreciate the time put in with that. We also celebrated our bus, bus driver appreciation day. So there were cookies for all um on the twenty-fourth. So we do appreciate the relationship that we have with Saints Bus Company. Our bus drivers are great. They they help us in so many different ways with our students, and I just really appreciate the relationship that we have with them. Um we find out about things that are happening on the bus relatively soon, and between but between the bus drivers reporting and five and six-year-olds, um, you know, we're usually able to stop some things very, very quickly um once we hear about them. Um, there's a couple of other events that have happened in the past, but this year we had to do them virtually. And one was Karen Snae was able to organize uh Minnesota author Stacy Bauer. Um, she did a virtual author visit um into all of our classrooms, and she was able to explain what it's like to be a writer and what the process is for getting a book uh published. So and then the students also had the opportunity to purchase her books or um read her books in the library. There was, she did have them all set aside in there, so that was kind of fun for our students to get that opportunity. And starting today, and it runs through the week, um Martin Luther College is also offering us the opportunity to watch their production of Jack and the Beanstalk. Typically, first graders would go on a field trip to the play that's over there, but this year we aren't able to do that, so they are bringing that to us. So we appreciate that opportunity as well. Um, just a reminder that we too are taking registrations for next year. Our online registration for kindergarten is open. And as of this morning, we also opened our PTC Fast, which is our conference um scheduling line. So if anyone needs assistance with either of those, just call South, and we will certainly help you out. On to you, Mr. Doherty.
Why do I feel like I should write the Beastie Boys and have them write a new song called Unmute the Mic instead of passing it there, Mrs. Elke? That was, that has to be the longest time we let you go with the muted mic.
You know what? I know. I I think every month you just try to let me go a little longer.
It's so good, so good. Uh, we've all done it. We've all done it. So all greetings, uh Board Chair Leonard, members of the board from North Elementary School. Um, yeah, a lot of stuff going on at North. Um, some of it is even is is kind of stuff we've done in the past, so it's exciting uh to get back into a routine, certainly. Um, we had a number of students this last week um attend virtually, albeit virtually, Young Writers and Artists Conference. Um, and that's something usually um that goes on um at various spots coordinated by Southern Minnesota, or excuse me, the um Cooperative in Mankato and it's for third through sixth grade, but um we just, of course, have third and fourth graders do that. So they were doing that on their iPads and kind of found stations around the building in order to participate in in uh training sessions around writing and artistry. So it's fun kind of seeing them being independent around the building. Also, um, third quarter's coming to close. As Miss Elke mentioned, we're gonna be sending out uh or doing report cards here real quick. We have conferences coming up. The scheduler opened up as of today, so we're always pushing for a hundred percent participation. If possible, it will be all virtual. Um, so teachers will push out those links once you sign up for the conference, so make sure you do that, parents. Also, uh junior, junior achievement is uh wrapping up. We usually have um JA um be administered by area volunteers, and junior achievement is is about educating students around college and for readiness, uh entrepreneurships, financial literacy um through hands-on experiments um in application. Um, but our teachers facilitated that this year um under the direction of the coordinator. Um, and it's, it's gone well. I think everybody's already done with it. It's always, you know, um great to have guest speakers come in and talk about J I and and um you know, working with money, business. Uh, we certainly thank all of uh the area sponsors, um quite a few banks in the area. Um, pay for a lot of great materials, and the teachers just always love all the hands-on things that they get to keep um and utilize going forward. So thanks, Junior Achievement for that. And then um we have MSU Children's Theater who um have put on a recorded production of Planet Protectors, and it's a um a science-based uh theme with their theater and art students. Um, thanks, Mr. Lenha for getting that organized. Um, and it's certainly not, it's not live, um, but it's, it's a, it's a recording that all of our teachers are watching with the kids this week. It's about taking care of the planet, Planet Protector. So thanks for coordinating that. Uh, Mr. Landhoff. And that's it for at North. And I do want to confirm at North, we let the kids go out and stomp around in the mud, Mrs. Elke. We say welcome to the mud cuz we don't have carpeting in our hallways. That's probably a big, big piece of it. No, we don't do that. We don't do that. That's a no-no.
Principal Doherty, there is uh, there is a Beastie Boys uh lyric, Get on the Mic, so maybe that's what.
And I figured they had it covered.
All right, and at the middle school, uh, we enter phase three of our transition back to in-person learning. If you remember, on March first, we welcome back our fifth graders, March eighth, our sixth graders, and then tomorrow, our seventh and eighth graders. Uh, and it's been, it's been really nice uh to be able to phase them in. I think it's been really good for our students and for our staff, especially those younger ones, to be able to just be in the building by themselves, um, just as a fifth grade without all the the commotion that comes with the full building. Um, over the last couple of weeks, we've learned a lot in terms of uh what in-person learning will look like uh with COVID restrictions. Uh, mostly, we've learned about traffic flow. We've learned about the best way to put dividers on desks so that you can see through them. Um, and and even on Friday, last Friday, we're moving tables around in the cafeteria to make sure that we had optimal seating for students. So uh, super excited uh for tomorrow to be full uh and ready to go. Um, like North and uh, North and South, we also have conferences on the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and thirtieth. Our conference scheduler opened up this morning as well. If anybody needs that link, uh, feel free to call the office to get, to get signed up. Um, March eighteenth, uh, as as you know, is the end of the quarter. And March twenty-second marks the beginning of our fourth quarter. And at the middle school, we'll have a slight adjustment to our daily schedule beginning March twenty-second. And that adjustment allows us to put Saints time back into our daily schedule. Um, with everybody back in, we see the need to be able to have that flex time to intervene with students during the day. And that Saints time is also our band and choir period. Um, so we will begin uh large group band and choir again with with distancing and belt covers and masks um to make sure that we're safe there. And then lastly, uh, we're a little behind uh compared to a normal year, but within the next couple of weeks, Ms. Dozy will begin the registration process of the middle school, so we can start seeing um the numbers for our electives going into next year.
Thank you, everybody, for the reminder to unmute myself. Um again, like, what did we expect from our first day back all in in uh the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, but a snow day? Or excuse me, a distance learning day. Uh, we are geared up at the high school to welcome um all those who are not um not distance learners back into the building tomorrow. And like I said, the Student Council deserves a ton of thanks for um getting everybody excited about that uh as they would the first week of school. Uh, there are a couple of things that that kids will will notice that are different about the space. Um we have, we, we, we determined a specific number of kids per our regular classroom that was, that we felt comfortable with. And any section over that, uh, we've we have built a spillover classroom in the second floor humanities pod uh that will, that will seat any classes that are, that are considered overflows. Um, we also have plenty of furniture that we have uh located outside of teachers' classrooms. Should they have any um any class time dedicated to work time and and students feel more comfortable spacing out into those pods? Uh, so, so I, we're, we're as ready as we possibly can be. Um we also have a move for our rock bend classrooms. Uh, the Community Center has graciously um let us use their, the governor's room, which uh, as you know, uh, Mr. Grand Seth, I think you're sitting in there right now. Uh, they didn't have to move furniture like they usually will uh to get ready for any, any board meetings. Um, but we've got furniture set and ready to go for our um for our rock bend kids in both the governor's room and the Saint Peter Room at the Community Center. And thanks to Chris Overbow for making sure that we have the the right Wi-Fi set up for our kids to be able to to use that. Uh, our MUC trial team, as you know, made it to state. Uh, they went two and one in three rounds, uh, which means that they didn't run, uh, they didn't end up in the championship round, uh, but but it, they were, they did an amazing job. Uh, it was kind of fun. Um, I know it would be more exciting for them to be actually at at the state tournament and in a in the, in the right place, but it was kind of fun to have them in the building in between rounds and, you know, then then heading into their space to um to do battle in the courtroom. And uh, I, I, I had the opportunity to watch about two hours of it, and they are an extremely impressive group of of um kids. So congrats to Dan Clark and and his mock trial team. We did have two all-state members of that team, Rahima Jamak. Uh, was um, is an all-state attorney and Miranda Seham, an all-state witness. Uh, so we are very proud of those kids and the hard work that they've put in. Um in, in more important news, not really, um, but spring events are on everybody's mind, and we know that at the high school, especially spring events are really an important part of the high school experience for kids. And so we will be communicating with families um as as we work through the new state guidance that came out last Friday to see exactly what we can, what we can do while following the guidance uh and safely host some of those those important spring experiences uh for high school kids. Prom, graduation, their spring activities. As you know, we moved our, our fall musical to the spring. Uh, so hopefully, we will be able to host more of those opportunities for kids this spring than we were able to last year. Uh, and lastly, I know he's no longer in this meeting because like the dutiful activities director that he's been, he is now attending a park board meeting. But I cannot, um, which is probably best. He does not like kudos at all, but uh, I can't say enough um great things about the work that Jordan Paula has done with us over the last three years. Um, he's, he's uh moved, moved our activities, programs forward, given them a vision um and a mission, and um we will miss him and wish him well.
Thank you very much, Principals. Superintendent Grand Seth?
Yes, thank you. Um, I am going to start this evening with an introduction. Um, but before I introduce her, um, I just want to say that communication is a really important piece of the, the job of the school district. We have thousands of students whose, whose families we are trying to get information to and involving them and engaging them. And uh with pieces like newsletters and social media and our website, and there are so many different ways of getting information out that we really need to have someone who's coming to work every day and working with our families and engaging our community and making sure that all of us are communicating in a way that is efficient and effective and uh moves the district forward. And Heather DeHay has joined us. This is the uh her second Monday, and I am thrilled to um introduce her to you. You may have noticed her sitting uh through the meeting, and um Heather, I I don't know if you want to say a few words, get you on the spot?
Sure. First, thank you for trusting me with this opportunity. I had a great first week getting acclimated. Um I think that I'm probably most excited about this team and all of the wonderful things they're doing. It will be easy for me to promote those in the community. Um, I think I did realize just how long my list is going to be. Um, good job, security there. Uh, we did start this week uh working on the enrollment campaign and how I can further enhance the building's current programs and to get that word out. Um, I'm, I had planned to do it today, but tomorrow I'll be at the high school doing some testimonials with juniors and seniors um that you will be seen hopefully soon in the media on why it was a benefit to them to start in Saints Nation from an early age and to be a part of our, our Saints program from um their school educational career. So I'm excited uh to hear what they have to say. The feedback from them has been interesting, so look for that. And then also in the media this week, um, Affe's uh new position will be introduced and started the conversation about all the good things to come that he has put together. So it was wonderful to get to meet him, and what a great individual, so um dynamic in all the things that he is doing. So I'm personally excited about that as well. So thank you. Thank you for voting yes on me, and uh, I'm excited.
Yes, today was also the first day of um many people might be familiar with Saints Connect that goes out to the community, and now we have an internal um matching uh newsletter called Staff Connect. Uh, that is all information for staff with kind of the five most important things you need to know this week um to, to keep information flowing inside the district as well. So she's, she's only been here a week, and she's already um making a big difference in how we are sharing information. So glad to have you here, Heather. And of course, everyone else spoke about our, our first uh mostly in-person day. We still continue to uh provide distance learning for over two hundred students, but instead, we had distance learning for everyone today, just as another surprise, because that was really fake spring that we were experiencing, and now maybe real spring will be on the way. Might be another fake spring. Time will tell. But we do look forward to getting things somewhat back to normal as time goes on. I do have to caution us, though, that we are seeing increased cases throughout the region, and more of those cases are of the, the UK variant. It was just released today that out of a hundred and forty people involved with the cluster in Carver County, that thirty-two of them actually tested positive with the UK variant. So that was about twenty-three percent of the people that were tested after that exposure. So we really need to remain vigilant with our mitigation. We have to distance when we can, continue to wear masks, washing our hands. Uh, and especially if, if someone in your household has symptoms or has been diagnosed with COVID, um, we, we urge you to stay home and also to get tested. And the Department of Health is recommending that students who are involved with activities outside the school day are tested at least every two weeks, and if it is a, a high contact sport um or uh where kids are uh on the court a lot, such as well, basketball's done, um, hockey, um but if, if they have close exposures, often that they are tested more, more often, like every week. And if you need information on where to to have that done, you can go to the Department of Health website. It was included in our email on Sunday evening, which I understand went out at seven-thirty instead of six-thirty. Little time difference on my computer. I apologize about that. And uh, we'll be back to six-thirty this coming weekend. In other news, we have been planning for summer school as well, believe it or not. That's just around the corner already. And with additional funding from the states and federal government, we are able to offer more opportunities than we usually would. So be looking for information coming out of exciting summer school opportunities coming up. Could be a great chance for our students to continue their learning into the summer and for our high school students to make up some credits if they need to do that. So without further ado, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Gronseth. Board members will go around the table and we'll go, we'll go in reverse. So John.
Yeah, I just want to wish the staff and administrators and the teachers, you know, as we go back all in person, good luck. And, you know, I hope this is something that provides a stronger benefit educationally for all of our students. So thank you for all the planning that's gone into it and all the work that's in prep to get us to where we are now. So.
Thank you. Tracy?
What John said, that's what I was gonna say. Excited for everyone to be back, hoping for the best. And Heather, it's nice to have you on board.
Thank you. Drew?
Nothing additional. Thank you.
Tim?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Bill?
Nothing.
Vicki?
Yes, I, I've got a couple of questions for Annette. I was just wondering, I wanted to ask her about Rock Bend. Is there still one classroom still in there or are all the classrooms going to be in the community center? No.
Well, we have a two, we have two classrooms for Rock Bend. Now we added a second teacher, second classroom. So two classrooms of 15 each, and they're both moving out there. Both, both of those teachers felt like it was really important to be able to move together. So they'll still be able to continue to collaborate. And they also, I believe, share a paraprofessional. So it's kind of hard to do if that person was sprinting back and forth between buildings.
Right. Is that still high school students?
Yes. Okay, nine through, it's just nine through 12. But we all, as an ALC, we also are partnering with Cleveland schools. So Cleveland students as well can be a part of Rock Bend as well, which, which is one of the reasons it's growing quickly.
Okay. Okay, well, with that, I want to thank you, Annette. With that, I want to say, welcome, Heather. Jordan, I'm so sad to see you go. You've been a great person for our school district and good luck with your new position. And to the teachers, I'm so happy that the kids are back. You guys have done a great job.
Thank you, Vicki. Yes, Heather, welcome. Jordan, congratulations on your new position and, and new adventures. Thank you for serving St. Peter as, as well as you did. I'd also like to extend congratulations to Bukata Hayes, the executive director of the Greater Mankato Diversity Council. He is moving on to another position. I think he's lived in Mankato for 20 years. He served the Greater Mankato Diversity Council for a long time. He's been a great asset to the St. Peter School District and the, and the community, helping us with a myriad of, of things. And we just have appreciated his leadership and his expertise and wish him and his family the best in his new position and, and their new adventures as well. That's all I have. With that, I would like to announce the upcoming meetings of the board. There is a finance committee meeting on Thursday, March 18th, 2021, at 8:00 AM in the St. Peter Middle School conference room. There's an instructional program committee Tuesday, March 23rd at 8:00 AM in the St. Peter High School Community Room. Negotiations Committee, March 23rd at 3:00 PM in the High School Community Room. And a policy review committee, April 8th at 3:30, also in the High School Community Room. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hager, I make a motion to adjourn.
Dixon, second.
Excellent, we have a motion in a second. We'll do a quick roll call. Vicki?
Hager, I.
Bill?
Porterland, I.
Tim?
Logan Skard, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
Tracy?
Stewie, I.
John?
Carlson, I.
Leonard, I. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.